Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting to order if you would rise with me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Posey, would you call the roll?
Yes, Madam Supervisor. Trustee Bussinow.
Here.
Trustee Nevers.
Present.
Trustee Oliver.
Here.
Trustee Smith.
Here.
Treasurer Goodhue.
Here.
Clerk Posey here. Supervisor Dunn.
Here.
All members are present.
Thank you. Next, we will have the approval of the agenda with any corrections or additions. We do have one, correct?
One add-on is, a proposed add-on is number 18 under the supervisor's office, and that is the allocation of the CDBG 2020 service funding.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hearing none, I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Motion by Ms. Posey.
Support.
Ordered by Ms. Smith. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by saying nay. That motion carries. Next is the approval of the bills. As usual, there are two bill runs. If anyone wishes an item removed, please indicate so at this time.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to remove vendor number 10172 Michigan Justice from the bill run approval. I'll explain in my comments later my concerns with the legal bills presented related to this vendor.
Trustee Bussinow, can you repeat the number?
Uh, number, vendor number 10172 Michigan Justice.
Hearing none, I'll make a motion to approve the, did you have one?
No, I do not.
To approve the bill run with the removal of vendor number 10172 Michigan Justice.
Is there support?
Support.
Ordered by Ms. Smith. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by saying nay. That motion carries. Next, we have the approval for the previous meeting minutes, and those are from February 26th. Are there any additions, deletions, or corrections?
Hearing none, I'll make a motion that we approve the previous meeting minutes from February 26, 2020, as presented.
Motion by Ms. Goodhue.
Support.
Ordered by Ms. Nevers to approve the meeting minutes. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by saying nay. That motion carries. Then we have the closed session.
Nope, just special meeting.
I'm sorry, special meeting minutes to approve. Are there any questions, or deletions, or additions?
Madam Chair, hearing none, I move that we approve the special meeting minutes from February 19, 2020.
Motion by Ms. Nevers.
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Posey to approve the special meeting minutes. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by saying nay. That motion carries. And the next one is the consent agenda items. These are routine that come before you almost every board meeting. If you wish to discuss an item, please indicate so at this time.
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion that we approve the consent agenda items as presented.
Motion by Ms. Goodhue.
Support.
Support.
Supported by Ms. Nevers. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by saying nay. That motion carries. Thank you. Next, we have public comments, and that's on agenda items only. If you wish to speak about an agenda item, please come to the podium, state your name for the record, and remember you have a three-minute time limit.
Good evening, Madam Chair and members of the board. Frank Cusmano, 16188, Jenny Drive. I am making public comment on item 21, discussion establishing regarding the establishment of the Ethics Board. I understand that there's going to be general discussion about the Ethics Ordinance, and that's what my public comment is about. Several years ago, when I first got on the Board of Trustees at Macomb Community College, I had offered up for the board's review, and I couldn't get a second, a conflict of interest policy. The question is reasonably asked, and the presidential campaigns have harped on this quite a bit, about money and politics. Well, I would suggest in advance that that applies to local politics as well. What persons or entities have pecuniary interest in decisions made by the elected officials and boards in this township? Well, we all know full well that the collective bargaining unit representatives, the unions, developers, business owners, moneyed investors in land, and land speculators all have those interests. So what I have prepared is a change to the conflict of interest policy to be a conflict of interest ordinance. It defines elected officials, it defines interested campaign contributors, contributors, and it states in the body of it, elected officials shall vote on any matters in which he or she is accepted, campaign contributions directly or indirectly from an interested campaign contributor unless, at first, at the meeting where the business is to be approved or ratified, the elected official first verbally discloses to the Board of Trustees at the meeting under the Open Meetings Act the name of the interested campaign contributor, the amount of the campaign contribution, and the date that the contribution was made.
Mr. Cusmano, where is that on the agenda?
It's item 21, the general discussion of the Ethics Ordinance.
Okay, thank you.
Um, and I'm finishing up. This policy is for disclosure only and nothing in this policy construed to limit the elected official from accepting campaign contributions from any person, entity, union, or labor organization irrespective of business dealings with the township. I'll present this to the board with permission of the chair. Is this legal counsel now, acting legal counsel, the gentleman to my right?
Anyone else? Very well, we'll move on then to a public hearing. I will open a public hearing. It is 7:10, and this is the Michigan National Natural Resources Trust Fund Grant Application Public Hearing. We have two people from the Six Rivers Conservancy to help us through that, so gentlemen, if you would.
Thank you so much, Supervisor Dunn and trustees. Thanks so much for having us here and for the opportunity to participate with you in this project today. I am Chris Bunch, the Executive Director of Six Rivers Land Conservancy, and with me is Brian Marzal, our Land Protection Manager. And so we've been working on this project, as you know. Last year, we acquired the property and applied to the Natural Resources Trust Fund, and unfortunately, that grant application was not successful, but we have, we're moving forward with reapplying to the trust fund, and what we're asking you to do is to move forward with an application in the amount of $2 million, which is the amount that the highest appraisal came in at. And as you look through the proposal, you will see that with a $2 million application, we ask the township to put up $300,000 of the local match, and Six Rivers Conservancy will absorb $500,000 of the local match, which allows us to get to $800,000 of local match and therefore a much higher percentage of match. That will help increase the score over what we got last year in last year's application. There's some other things we're also going to do. One of the things that is in our favor this year is that we happen to participate in a stakeholder series with the trust fund, and we got some adjustments made to the scoring criteria. One of the places that we didn't get points last year was in their category for urban projects, and this property is literally a quarter mile outside of the metropolitan statistical area, and so we missed 40 points on the application because of that. They've adjusted the scoring criteria and put in a buffer, so we won't recapture all 40 points that were missed because of the location of the property, but we will get 15 extra. And there are some other things that we're going to do to the application. We, as you know from our conversations, we're going to write the application for you this year. Brian is well, well underway on that. Brian recently retired as the Parks Manager for the City of Auburn Hills and was very successful in bringing in trust fund applications there, so he's got a lot of experience with this. So our hope is this year with a little different approach and putting a little more elbow grease and energy into it, that we will be successful and we'll get that grant brought home, and that'll help you get this thing into your hands and operable. In the meantime, as you know, we own it on your behalf, and we've leased it to you, and we were just talking to Jason, and we're hopeful that you guys will be able to start to make use of this as things dry out a little bit and people can get out there in the spring. So be glad to answer any questions you have, be glad to let Brian talk a little bit about the work that he's doing. So once again, we are very excited about this. There's a lot of support from a lot of our friends and colleagues throughout the community, from Macomb County, from Metro Parks, from the Watershed Council, and others that are very interested in seeing this property become both a public park and preserved in order to benefit water quality. So we're grateful to be working with you on this project.
Thank you. Brian, did you have anything to add?
I think Chris covered it very well. If there are any specific questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Okay, thank you. Any questions from the board?
Madam Chair, I have one question. When do you expect to hear the results of the application?
So the application has to be submitted by April 1, and then their typical process is that they will give us the decision at their December meeting. So one of the things that's happening between now and December is that they have asked us once again to host their August board meeting. So we're hosting the trust fund board meeting and giving them a tour in August. They wanted to be in Detroit this time, so we're not going to be able to get them all the way up here to this property, but we will have their focused attention for half the day on August 18th and a big chunk of the day on the 19th as well. So that's helpful.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Any comments, questions, motions?
You just have to close the hearing. You have to close the hearing.
Oh, I have to close the public hearing?
Thank you.
It is 7:15. No, we need to adopt the resolution.
That's on the agenda, though.
Oh, you're right. Sorry. Under new business, we have a Water and Sewer Department request to approve the payment for pay estimate number nine, 2019 sanitary sewer cleaning. This is the same scenario that we've been approving these right along, correct?
Correct.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Supervisor Dunn and board members. As she's already stated, this will be pay estimate number nine. This will be payable to Pipe Tech Services. This is the outfit that's cleaning and TV in the sewers this spring, late winter, and we're recommending approval of this payment in the amount of $88,597.66. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Wanglin?
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to approve the payment for construction pay estimate number nine, 2019 sanitary sewer cleaning CCTV investigation project number 0249-0162 in the amount of $88,597.66.
Motion by Ms. Posey.
Support.
Ordered by Ms. Smith to approve the payment number nine as requested. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by saying nay. Motion carries. Next one is a request to approve the contract change order number two for 23 Mile Road water main replacement. Mr. Wanglin, please.
Thank you, Supervisor Dunn and board members. As you've already stated, this will be change order number two. This will be for the water main project that took place this winter on 23 Mile Road from roughly the McBride Drain to Commons Drive, and what this amounts to is a reduction in the contract of $4,680.0. And I would call this just a minor housekeeping kind of item.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions from the board?
Hearing none, I'll make a motion to approve the contract change order number two, 23 Mile Road water main replacement from the McBride Drain to Commons Drive, Macomb Township to LD DiAgostini, LD DiAgostini &amp; Sons, project number 181263, in the amount of $744,513.63.
Motion by Ms. Goodhue.
Support.
Supported by Ms. Nevers to approve the change order. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by saying nay. That motion carries. Thank you. Next, we have the request to pay the contractor's payment number two for the 23 Mile Water Main replacement also.
Thank you.
Mr. Wanglin?
And this will be pay cert number two. This will be payable to LDS &amp; Sons Incorporated. This is for the same project that we just referenced in the amount of $128,947.90. Recommending we move forward on this.
Thank you. Any questions?
Madam Chair, I will make the motion to pay contractors payment number two, the 23 Mile Road water main replacement to LD DiAgostini &amp; Sons, Inc., for the amount of $128,947.90.
Thank you. Is there support for that?
Support.
Motion by Ms. Nevers, seconded by Mr. Oliver to grant permission to enter into this cost sharing. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by saying nay. That motion carries.
Thank you, board.
Thank you. Next, we have Human Resources, and this is a request to initiate the recruitment process for a building inspector. Mr. Maples has requested the Human Resources Department to initiate the recruitment process for the position of building inspector. This is a replacement for a employee who resigned from their position. This position is covered under the collective bargaining agreement with MTPEA, MAP, and would be posted in compliance with the provision of the collective bargaining agreement. Correct?
That is correct.
Thank you. Anything else?
No, that's all you've covered, all, Madam Supervisor.
Okay. Any questions from the board?
Madam Chair, I will make the motion to request to initiate the recruitment process for a building inspector.
Motion by Ms. Smith.
Support.
Supported by Ms. Goodhue to approve the request to initiate the recruitment process for the position of building inspector. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by saying nay. That motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Supervisor and board members.
Next one is authorization to extend offer of employment, and this is Water and Sewer Supervisor. On January 8th, the Human Resources Department was authorized to begin the recruitment process for a Water and Sewer Supervisor. The township received five applicants for this position. The applicants met with the selection committee on February 13th. The selection committee consisting of myself, Clerk Posey, Treasurer Goodhue, Mr. Wanglin from the Water and Sewer Department, and Mr. Koenig, his assistant. They are all recommending employee number 145 for this position. Are there any questions?
Madam Chair, I just would like to make a correction. I just caught it now, I wasn't in attendance with those interviews, so I just want it noted that I wasn't a part of the interview panel for this position.
Okay. We will remove your name from that. Any other questions?
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to approve the hiring of employee number 145 to the position of Water and Sewer Supervisor.
Motion by Ms. Goodhue.
Support.
Supported by Ms. Smith. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by saying nay. Motion carries. Next is a request to promote a, to promote probationary firefighters. Chief Phillips?
Madam Supervisor, members of the board, I'm recommending the promotion of probationary firefighter Josh Sawinski to the position of auxiliary firefighter. Probationary firefighter Sawinski has successfully completed his 12-month probation period and is recommended for promotion by the Probationary Development Committee and myself. So at this time, I request a motion to approve the promotion of probationary firefighter Sawinski.
Thank you. Any questions for the chief? Any motions?
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to approve the promotion of probationary firefighter Sawinski.
Motion by Ms. Goodhue.
Support.
Supported by Ms. Nevers. All in favor, signify by...
She got you.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't hear her.
You're good.
Pardon me. Okay. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by saying nay. That motion carries.
At this time, I'd call up firefighter Sawinski to receive his badge and helmet shield.
we just talked about for the 26 Mile Road properties. If there are any questions, we can direct them to Mr. Bunch. Then we are looking for a motion on the resolution.
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to adopt the attached resolution to authorize the submission of an MNRTF grant application for $1,200,000 for 26 Mile Road properties.
Motion by Ms. Goodhue.
I'll support that.
Seconded by Mr. Oliver. Ms. Posey, would you call the roll?
Yes, Madam Supervisor. Treasurer Goodhue?
Yes.
Trustee Oliver?
Yes.
Trustee Bussinow?
No.
Trustee Nevers?
No.
Trustee Smith?
No.
Clerk Posey, no, and Supervisor Dunn?
Yes.
That motion fails. That resolution is not adopted.
We'll move on to the Assessing Department. This is a request to approve payment of assessment notices. Mr. Hickey.
Thank you, Madam Chair and board members. This is a request to approve the payment for the printing of the 2020 assessment notices to Whitlock Business Systems in the amount of $5,238.28.
Thank you. Any questions?
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to approve the payment of the assessment notices in the amount of $5,238.28.
Motion by Ms. Goodhue.
Support.
Supported by Ms. Smith to approve this payment. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by saying nay. That motion carries.
Thank you, board members.
Thank you. Madam Chair, you've got to go back to 18, the add-on.
Pardon?
You have to go back to 18, the add-on.
It's right now.
We just did 19.
No. 18. We just did 18.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay. Number 18, the add-on is the allocation of CDBG 2020 service funding. The amount of brick and mortar funding allocated to Macomb Township is $150,000. Approval from Macomb County was secured by Mr. Gelli from the Facilities and Grounds Department and will be used to continue the remaining handicap ramp improvements on sidewalk corners. This is the only amount, and this is an ongoing project which we've done for the last one year. This is continuation of that particular project. Any motions?
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to allocate the $31,000 of CD, $31,695. Did I say the right number?
No, this is the $150,000 for the brick and mortar.
Oh, okay. Did we do the one for sale?
No, we're going to do the next one.
Okay. For the $150,000 in brick and mortar service fees.
Okay. Motion by Ms. Posey.
Support.
Supported by Ms. Nevers. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by saying nay. That motion carries. The next part is the service money. We have $39,193 allocated to us. Out of that comes $7,500 in chores services for a remainder of $31,900, or $693. Although all the applications were worthy, Parks and Rec is asking for $31,000. Due to the increase in attendance in the past year, the Parks and Rec Department is asking for the entire amount to fund the senior programs, as well as utilities, supplies, salaries, et cetera. I would like to say that I get compliments all the time about the staff at the senior center for doing a good job of drawing in additional residents, providing fellowship, seminars, entertainment, and fitness. So thank you to Sandy Kirk and her staff for her hard work. If no one objects, it would be my recommendation to award the entire amount, $31,693, to the senior program, and I will make that into a motion.
Support.
Motion by Ms. Dunn, supported by Ms. Posey, to allocate the entire $31,693 to the Macomb Township Parks and Recreation Citizen Programs and related expenses. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by saying nay. That motion carries. Then we are on to Broadcast Media, and this is cable TV playback equipment. Mr. Gillis?
Thank you. Good evening, board members. Tonight I have before you a request to purchase new cable TV playback equipment and two routing boxes and a video router. There was, this project was put on bidden, we received direct solicitations, and it's been approved by the purchasing specialist. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Madam Chair, just had one question. It's kind of related to... It's kind of related to this, but kind of not. People in the community have asked why we can't go live, and I asked people in your department about that, and they said something about because we have to run a wire up here.
There is no interconnection between this building and the cable head end in the Macomb Township, so that's why. Live streaming is a different option, but I'm really not prepared to answer those questions at this point.
Well, I know. It's with the agenda item talking about playback.
Sure.
So I thought it really- because this is something residents are asking about. I just thought I'd give you an opportunity to ask that. So right now, we're not equipped to.
Correct. And obviously, some communities do have the capability. That's for two reasons. One, their franchise agreement spelled it out when they put it in twenty, thirty years ago, and also the head end assembly is also in the same building.
Perfect.
Which is not the case here.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to award the new Ultra Nexus HD dash X two playback equipment to Pro Sound for nine thousand four hundred and fifty dollars and award Black Magic Gear to Advanced Lighting and Sound for the amount of one thousand five hundred and twenty-six for a total award price of ten thousand nine hundred and seventy-six dollars plus shipping and handling.
Motion by Ms. Goodhue.
I'll support that.
Supported by Ms. Nevers. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by saying nay. That motion carries.
Thank you, Board members.
Under trustees section, there is a discussion regarding establishment of ethics board. Mr. Busino, you ask for this to be on the agenda.
Yes, Madam Chair. I actually have quite a long statement I could read based on a response I get from you right now. Hopefully, I don't have to read it, but I just want to ask you, your office has a statutory responsibility of being the chief legal agent of the township and being the manager of all the township departments except for the clerk and treasurer's office. Can you please tell the community when you plan to direct somebody to post applications for the ethics board?
There is nothing in that ordinance that says the supervisor shall. It says the township board shall appoint.
Okay. And when the township board has appointed people, other- this past practice, and that's pretty standard, the past practice of any time that this board has appointed somebody to new chairs, that- I don't have any access to the website. We have accepted applications through your office, and that's been the standard practice. So I guess that's what we need to discuss.
Mr. Busino, that is covered by state statute.
Okay. All right. So, Madam Chair, I'd like to read a statement then. Okay. As we all know, there were numerous political games being played that caused an unnecessary delay in the creation of the ethics ordinance. But in October, this board took action that allowed the ethics ordinance to become reality. To make a stronger statement, we took a vote to create a law. At that moment, when we created law, our consciousness as a board was required to go from one of a political nature to that of a governance nature. As elected officials, we all had to make an oath to obey the Constitution of the United States of America, the state of Michigan, and to faithfully discharge the duties of our office to the best of our ability. The clerk understood the oath we took to follow state law, as state law directs that publication of the ordinance shall be made within thirty days after the passage of the ordinance by inserting either a true copy of a summary of the ordinance once in a newspaper circulating with the township. The clerk, I assume the clerk's office did that. I'm trying to give a compliment here, so. State law also states if an ordinance imposes a sanction for the violation of the ordinance, the ordinance shall take effect thirty days after the first publication of the ordinance. So according to state law, the ordinance is in full effect as of December fourteenth, two thousand nineteen. In relation to the Board of Ethics, the ordinance does state that the Board of Trustees shall appoint a Board of Ethics consisting of three members as an advisory board for the purpose of interpreting this ordinance and as otherwise defined herein, Board of Ethics. The initial three members of the Board of Ethics shall be appointed for one, two, and three-year terms of their office respectively. Terms of office shall expire on December thirty-first of the respective years. Thereafter, all members shall be appointed to three-year terms beginning January first. So we, as a board, have the duty, according to law, to appoint a Board of Ethics. I'm concerned that no visible steps have been taken by- to manage to start a process to appoint the Board of Ethics. I cannot faithfully discharge the duties as an elected official, which I took a note to do. I have concerns if steps to appoint an ethics board are being willfully neglected. We're refusing to take any advi- you've refused to take advice from me in the past, but let me offer this. Under the Penal Code, seven five zero point four seven eight of Michigan, willful neglect of duty, public officer or person holding a public trust or employment states, "When any duty is or shall be enjoined by law upon any public officer or upon any person holding any public trust or employment, every willful neglect to perform such duty where no special provision shall have been made for the punishment of such delinquency constitutes a misdemeanor punishable by imprisonment for not more than one year or a fine of not more than one thousand." I sincerely hope we are not willfully neglecting our duties by initiating an appointment of an ethics board. Why could this appear willful? Because this township, since I've been on this board, has created, altered, and enforced ordinances that regulate the behavior of residents and regulate the businesses of this township. But when we have an ordinance that regulates ethical behavior of us, of employees, and appointees in this township, we are not executing that ordinance. It appears to be willful, and I have concerns about that.
Yeah. What do we need?
And so, past practice, when this board has appointed anybody, the supervisor's office has taken the applications through the supervisor's office. I don't know who controls the website here. I can't go on and put those on the website. When I've tried to do things on my own as a board member, there was actually a resolution that, Mr. Busino, you shouldn't speak on behalf of the board. So who's going to do it?
Madam Chair, if I may. Mr. Busino, due to the ordinance not having specific language, we can do one of two things. We can amend the ordinance to include specific process and details as to it going, being all processed through the supervisor's office, or we can make a motion this evening to have the supervisor's office execute the application to include a Board of Ethics option on the existing application to be posted, and then allow three weeks for people to apply, and then it would be distributed to the board. Same process as we used in previous boards, but I think one of two things has to happen. Either we want to include language in the existing ordinance that has those processes and details spelled out for future boards, or if- and if that's the case, if you want to suggest language and bring it to the next meeting, and then we adopt that process, or you can suggest making a motion this evening that it's executed through the supervisor's office. Those are just suggestions.
Yeah. I think the reason it might not have been in ordinance, because the procedure, you know, when we appoint a board member, there's no policy spelled out in the state in their law either, but we've just done it, and it's always been that practice. When we appointed Kathy and Charlie to the board, the state has no process outlined. So you go to past practice. That is what we do at our job. So past practice has been for the supervisor's office to alter an application that's existing, and then people can check that box along with others. I mean, to be honest, we have a process in place, so to do that right now. I mean, we have a process in place. I cannot see it violating the ordinance, because if the ordinance as a board is going to appoint, you know, it doesn't say exactly how, so now we can- now we can go ahead with what we want, just like when we put Charlie and Kathy on the board. The state does not outline the process, but that's the process we took. So I appreciate that.
Yeah, I'm just suggesting a solution.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
In my conversation with the lady that was the deputy treasurer, she did create an application, so I don't know if her information is available now that she's not here, but I do know she did create an application.
Deputy supervisor, you mean? You said deputy treasurer.
I'm sorry.
Okay, okay. All right. Deputy supervisor, so there's something we could put there.
If- yes. She did create something in my conversations with her, so.
So could we- could we ask legal counsel if, I don't think this violates the ordinance, if we go past-practice method to appoint or to accept applications, correct? Do you think we need to adjust the ordinance? And to be honest, in support of me, when I talked to Greg, he was very much in support of creating this ethics board. He thinks some of the politics that are going on with some of our other situations could be handled through an ethics board and not by us up here having to take phone calls all hours of the day, you know, so.
My recommendation would be to look at the language you're suggesting and maybe table this for the next meeting, so we can discuss it with Mr. Mann, if the board would be okay with that.
But I do want to make everybody clear that the ethics ordinance did go into effect, so any behavior has been covered since it went into effect. Like, us delaying the creation of an ethics board doesn't mean that the ordinance is not in effect and that behavior's not covered by the ordinance, right?
Right.
Okay. All right. So I guess we table this? Come back with some language on how we do that?
Um, yeah, we- I don't know that we have to postpone or table it, because you just had on here discussion, so there was no action being requested, so therefore, we can just request to have it placed on the next agenda after discussing the language with Mr. Mann.
Okay. Thanks.
Madam Chair, if I may, could you please introduce this gentleman? I- I don't know who you are. I haven't been introduced.
Yes, I'm John Gillum. I'm with Foley in Mansfield.
Gillum?
Gillum, yes. And I work with Mr. Mann.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks.
I think that's it. Thank you.
I think I'm up on the next agenda item.
Sure. I wanted you to sit down and come back. Just kidding.
Thank you, Madam Supervisor. Board members, we just have a few updates this evening from general counsel. The first would be that we have been engaging with several of the departments of the township, engineering, planning, and enforcement on various matters. We've been responding to requests and making sure that all requested documentation and information are provided, so we're up to speed there regarding pending matters involving the township. We are aware of all the pending matters, and we have filed appropriate notices of appearance in those matters, and so that- to assure that the township is protected in those ongoing issues.
Thank you.
All right. Any questions?
No.
Thank you.
Again, Madam Chair, have we selected a new legal counsel? I don't recall ever being asked to vote on anything like that, or is that coming?
That will be coming.
Coming.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very well. We will move on then to public comments. This is on non-agenda items only. State your name.
Madam Supervisor and Board, welcome. My name's Fred Miller. I have the honor and privilege of serving as your county clerk. I want to say thank you for the opportunity to address you today. I promise I will be brief, because I know that you have important business, but also I'm still, as your clerk well knows, a little bit frazzled from the wee hours of this morning. If only every local clerk could work as efficiently as the local clerk here in Macomb Township does. We- Macomb Township was the first clerk's office to report election results last night, by all means, but we had a team that was there until well into the wee hours of the morning, three-thirty and four o'clock, to get our state reports, waiting for results to come in. So we're grateful for our local partners. We had some team members in the elections department that actually stayed overnight at the office last night to make sure that we have got everything done that we needed to do for the election. We have a great team of people at the clerk's office, and certainly, nobody knows that better than the good trustee Kathy Smith, who I can say with respect and fondness did a yeoman's job to stabilize the office of the county clerk, to fill vacancies, to do a triage, and nothing that we have accomplished since then would be- have been possible without her efforts, and so I'm grateful for her and want to give her a shout out because we all owe her gratitude.
Thank you, Mr. Miller.
Owe her gratitude. I've distributed to you all our annual report. If you're having a hard time sleeping, please pick this up. It'll push you right out. But it kind of details some of our initiatives over the past year, including the mobile office, so we've been going to every corner of the county to try and bring services closer to the people that we serve, our mutual constituents. Last summer, we had the good privilege to serve a mobile office here in the lobby of the township building, and it actually yielded one of my favorite interactions of last year. We had an elderly couple come in to renew the husband's CPL application, and while our team was processing that, we were chatting it up with his spouse, his wife that was there, and she was kind of lamenting about continuity plans for their assets and their house, and we were talking about the function of the register of deeds. And so we were able to look her up on our system right here in the lobby of the township hall and found out that contrary to her impression, her name was not on their homestead. And so we were able to file a quick claim deed on the spot, add her name to the homestead, so hopefully, in the event when he passes on many years in the future, but she'd be protected and it would save their family a lot of hassle. So it's stuff like that, when we can work together and bring services to people, it's really, as you all know firsthand, it really makes it gratifying to be a public servant. I have a couple of things I want to talk about, just very briefly. Register of deeds, we have over eight million images that are housed within our office, documents dating back to predating Michigan statehood. The Michigan Historical Society has a program called Centennial Farms where they honor farms that are continuously operating for a hundred years and all held by the same family. Within Macomb Township, there are five centennial farms that we could find. We reached out to those centennial farms and those families to meet us here this evening. I don't know if anybody is here in the audience, but I wanted to just share, because there are some great stories to tell. But I don't suppose anybody here is from the Schram Farm? Anybody? No? Is anybody here- does this sound familiar to anybody?
Yes.
It is? Okay. What's your last name?
Graybo.
Come on up here. Or- you have a- oh, you're familiar. Mr. Graybo's familiar with the program but not with this. Okay. Okay. So we had- we have- so our intent was, was to present these deeds to the family farms as just kind of a- to help tell the story of the rich history of Macomb Township. But we have the Charles Schram Farm, which was deeded in nineteen eleven. We have the Robert Schram Farm deeded in nineteen oh eight. We have the Felix Dennewith Farm deeded in eighteen sixty-four here in Macomb Township, and then the Jacob Lefergie Farm deeded in eighteen fifty-four. And then lastly, and perhaps most interesting, we have the George and Susanna Eheim Farm deeded in eighteen sixty-eight, but held within our register of deeds archives is the original land patent where someone, where Mr. Gottlieb had homesteaded the property, literally come out here and then had been deeded the property from the United States government for the sum of one dollar, and was able to basically stick his flag in the ground and have it, and this is a deed that is signed by representation by President Andrew Jackson. So there's not only does the register of deeds register and secure our ownership in various properties, but it also has a lot of great historical stuff to- stories to tell as well. So lastly, and I realize I'm way over my public time limit, but also housed within our archives is an atlas from eighteen seventy-five, and I wanted to present this to you, Madam Supervisor. In it contains these drawings of the residence of John Whitney from Macomb Township and the residence of George Heidenreich. I'll share these with you.
Very nice.
Display it to everybody. As well as a township map also from eighteen seventy-five, which shows all the different farms of the time back then, and some of these great names, which, living in Mount Clemens as I do, are all the streets that are named in Mount Clemens. So Aaron's, and of course, Heidenreich, Eldridge, and anyway, just part of the rich history of Macomb Township. So I want to present that to you, Madam Supervisor and Board. And lastly, and most importantly, if you don't remember anything else I say, I may be a stinking Democrat, but I'm your stinking Democrat, so I hope that you won't ever hesitate to call me if I can be of service to the good township. Thank you.
Very nice.
I'll present this to you.
Nice job, Fred.
Thank you very much.
You are. Thank you for the time.
Wonderful.
Very nice.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Miller.
(applause).
Thank you very much.
There you are. Thank you for the time.
Wonderful.
Very nice.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Miller.
Clerk Miller, are you leaving? Are you leaving? Because I was going to say something. We usually don't respond in public comment.
Yes, sir.
But it's a different kind of public comment. I think you know how I feel as a teacher, holding up historical maps, not getting anybody to answer, and you can't get a volunteer to come to the front of the room. So I empathize with you a little bit. Great job. Thanks.
John Parkinson, the address is on file with the clerk. Thank you, trustee Bussenow, for bringing up the, or asking about live streaming. Many residents have asked. We appreciate you. Madam Clerk, I always thought you were for truth and transparency. You have the knowledge of why Janet Dunn had to self-report, and to my understanding, are not under any gag order to not disclose the information to the board or the township residents. In the past, you have challenged Janet Dunn on more than one occasion. Now it appears that you are protecting her. You are under no legal authority to not disclose this information, so under truth and transparency, we all deserve to know what the reason was for Janet Dunn to self-report. Also, Clerk Posey, it was conveyed to me, according to sources attached to the fire department, that you have and continue to have a close personal and social friendship with Chief Phillips outside of work. On December 18th, you voted in favor of the chief's economic package. In the spirit of transparency and in accordance with the ethics ordinance, shouldn't you have recused yourself from this vote? Thank you.
Anyone else?
Madam Supervisor and Board members, I would just remind the board that the purpose of the public comments is not to engage in a dialogue. It's for the public to inform the board of their views, and would just recommend or remind you of that. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Frank Cusmano, 1-6188, Jenny Drive. On the issue of the ethic ordinance, if the law doesn't state a timeframe, a reasonable time period would be imposed by operation of law, by a court of law. I just wanted the board to be aware that anything that's unreasonable timewise would be construed, in my opinion, as an attorney practicing in the courts for the last 30 years, as a deliberate attempt to thwart that, enact the execution of their duties under the law. And thank you for pointing out the neglect of office statute, because I just miscited that in a brief I had written, but I haven't filed yet. And I also want to publicly acknowledge, I acknowledged privately to trustee Smith regarding the turnaround time at the clerk's office being as fast or faster than anywhere that I'm aware of in the state of Michigan, and I wanted to thank you publicly for doing that. I know I did so in chambers or in the offices of Judge Founts. And I want to compliment Clerk Miller on the job he's doing at the clerk's office as well, because it's not just about tearing down all the time. Sometimes you have to build up and acknowledge and respect accomplishments. And I just want to make one last comment. When I got thrown out of a meeting here back in September 2018, Supervisor Dunn, I was the one that was applauding when you said something that was good news for the township, and you said, "Thank you." And then you had me unceremoniously thrown out of the meeting. But I do acknowledge when things are going right and going well for the township, and we should all be happy about that, irrespective of anyone's political stripes. Thank you.
Seeing no one, we will move on to trustees' comments.
Yes, Madam Chair, if I may. I just received this in the mail this week, so it's quite fortuitous that our Michigan Township Association put out this March issue talking about ethics, an extensive article in here, which caused me to do a think piece on ethics. So I'd like to begin. The recent March issue of MTA's monthly publication entitled "Got Ethics" was a trigger for me. Residents might wonder why the schism. I'm referring to the four to two votes in favor of firing our HR legal counsel, Mr. Assorti. How could four members of the board be so resolute about the firing, and two members of the board be so averse to the firing? For me, and I know Mrs. Goody feels as I do, our votes had to do with the lack of fairness that we perceived and an unmistakable bias in using the employee evaluations to evaluate Mr. Assorti. On page 19 of this article, there was a paragraph entitled "Walk the Walk." According to the Institute for Local Government's Public Service Ethics Program, there are four tenants to ethical conduct in public office. Two of the four really stood out to me, and they are, number one, do not practice secrecy in decision-making, and number two, do not allow favoritism, unfairness, or bias to cloud decisions. Therefore, because there was nothing in Mr. Assorti's file formally documenting bullying, intimidation, or creating a hostile work environment, it is impossible for me to conclude anything other than bias and unfairness to have driven the use of employee evaluations and only employee evaluations in the firing of Mr. Assorti. And I just wanted to explain why there was such a dichotomy here in the votes to people in the viewing audience and people here. So thank you.
Anyone else?
Yes, Madam Chair. I just, I said when I pulled a bill today, legal bills, under the structure of this township for past three years, the legal bills have, were basically put in the hands because of a contract of our general counsel. At times, we tried to question some bills, and they were not successful. Since then, since February 19th, because even the question came up tonight is exactly where are we at with legal counsel? I think we're all asking those questions. So I had, I requested that itemized bills from those, especially the firm that we are paying to represent us in traffic court. I found some things in those bills that raise some questions, and I think this township even needs to look at, I had the opportunity to sit in traffic court on Monday for a couple hours with my law students, and I really, really question the representation we're getting in traffic court, if we even need the representation. I didn't see attorney around traffic court from four municipalities that brought tickets to the court, to the district court. Because of that, I would like to ask some questions. There's also things on the board that I feel that, under the itemized bills, that come under more of training for, there was a line on one of the bills, and I don't know who's looked through them, and I'm sure from time to time we do, but the board packets, there's a lot for us to look at. But there was parts of that itemized bill that included road safety MISD training. I do not know why we're paying law firms for their attorneys to attend a training at the MISD, but I could be mistaken about that. So I really want to be able to ask some questions. I know in the past that there are times when a trustee goes out, and I don't want to represent the board if you don't feel like I should, but I would like the permission from this board to be able to call a couple courts, ask some questions about really what is needed, what we're being charged, and when the board's okay with that.
You don't have to ask permission.
Okay, all right. I just, it's, because I know it's going to get back, otherwise trustee Bussenow is asking some of these questions. But that's why I had the bills pulled. I went probably 14 months back on our itemized legal bills.
Anyone else?
Yeah, I had a comment. Clerk Posey, thank you. It was a great election. I talked to a lot of people. Smooth. Mr. Miller confirmed that. Thank you. But I just want to think of a lot of other things you do that we don't know about, that you do behind the scenes. And one of the things, the other day, I was cutting down Hindrick Road. It was Bill of the Night, not too late, but it was dark, and I was so impressed on them lights, and I realized that that was part of this board, and you were spearheading that. So them are the things that's important to this township, and a lot of good things we're doing in this township. We're building a brand-new library. We just opened up a new fire station. We just finished 23 Mile Road. I think that's the stuff that we need to focus on, more of the, not the negative things. Tim, you bring up a lot of good stuff. Kathy, you did a great job at the county, it sounds like. So that's stuff I think we need to hear about in Macomb Township, instead of the negative stuff. So I just want to make that comment. Thank you.
Madam Chair, since Mr. Oliver brought that up, I just want to tell something personal about my life. My daughter turned 18 in January. She got to come register a vote here, and they did such a great job, and she was so enthusiastic about doing it, I had to pull her to do it. But afterward, she was so enthusiastic, she brought six of her girlfriends in the next two days to register to vote, and to me, that means a lot. So thanks for your group over there, Kristy.
Treasurer's comments?
My job is not as exciting as the clerk's, I guess, but the taxes, anybody that owes delinquent taxes now have to pay their taxes to the Macomb County Treasurer. But at this time, I want to take and applaud my staff. I have a staff of two, plus my deputy and myself. We process the bills in-house, so that we have more control over any mistakes that would be made by residents and try to catch those. We also prefer not to have lockbox, because it's expensive. So they do a really good job and work very hard in processing 30,000 bills at a time, plus water bills as well, and waiting on the counter, and answering telephones. We all work together as a team, and I would like to applaud them at this time also. Thank you.
Clerk's comments?
Well, we survived Election Day. It's been a busy year, planning and prepping with new laws, mandates, and limited time and resources, but we did it. Macomb Township has 63,462 registered voters, of which a total of 23,932 people exercised their right to vote yesterday. We had 11,379 vote by absent mail and ballot, and 12,553 at a polling location. Our voter turnout total for the 2020 presidential primary was 37.1%. In 2016, we had approximately 57,000 registered voters with a voting turnout of 48%. On March 10th, 2020, in just 13 hours, the clerk's department serviced 23,932 residents by absent email and vote or at a polling location. We coordinated with 350 election inspectors to assist voters at polling locations, and we registered 111 new voters on Election Day. This could not have been accomplished without the hard work and dedication of many. First, I would like to thank the 350 election inspectors. This is no easy task. There's a lot of information to learn in a short period of time. It's a long day, and it can be nerve-wracking at times. All of you did an amazing job, and we are extremely fortunate to have such a dedicated group of election inspectors. Second, the employees throughout this township. From prepping and setting up, training, filing, and to gathering extra hand sanitizer to help us in a stressful time, everybody, every department helped us out without hesitation. I can honestly say I feel fortunate to work amongst this amazing group of professionals. Lastly, I would like to thank the staff in my department and the temporary election staff from the bottom of my heart. The tricky part to an election is the unexpected. We prep for almost a year and try to prepare for all possible scenarios, and yet we still get thrown a curveball. This group of individuals handles organized chaos with ease and professionalism. I am extremely proud of each one of them and the kind professional service they provide to our voters, even during hectic times. The good news is after 19 hours together yesterday, we all still liked each other today. As a leader, it's not about working, it's not about people working for you, it's about people working with you to successfully accomplish a goal. Yesterday, I had the pleasure of working with an incredible group of individuals to accomplish one goal, and that was to provide the best service possible to the residents of this township. I just want to say thank you very much to everybody that assisted us, and good night.
Under supervisor's comments, I'm just going to remind you that the Household Hazardous Waste Day is May 2nd. It will be held here due to the construction. It cannot be done at the senior center. The other thing that I wish to talk to you about is, May is, I mean, March is National Reading Month. Macomb County Head Start serves 1,022 children, along with, I'm sorry, I lost my place here, that serves 1,022 youngsters in the ages 0 to 5 to get them ready for school. National Reading Month is a great way to interest children in the joy of reading. Next item is the issue currently before us, that would be the coronavirus, is of course on everyone's mind. The township staff will be meeting tomorrow to put a plan in place should the virus spread here. The departments that have numerous residents through their doors every day, as well as elected officials and emergency personnel, will meet to discuss a plan for a virus outbreak in Macomb Township. Information has been changing by the hour, so it is of utmost concern that everyone is on the same page. Keep families together, check on your neighbors, as well as the elderly and homebound. Thank you. That concludes the business for this evening. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Madam Chair, make a motion to adjourn.
Motion by Ms. Posey?
Support.
Supported by Mr. Oliver. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by saying nay. Motion carries, and we are adjourned.